Okay, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. Looking for a motion. When we quit just before lunch there, your councillor Swiger had a motion.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. So, yeah, we were discussing alleyways. And so there's a, I'm bringing forward a motion to have, it'll be brought up here, we can read it, but to have administration look at maintaining these alleyways in the hamlets and making them functional. So it's, I'll just read that motion for you, Mr. Reeve, there. "Council directs administration to bring back a report on the feasibility of opening or closing alleyways in municipal hamlets to a future meeting of council as directed." And it just, it kind of goes to the health of the hamlets for the next, you know, many hundreds of years that if you don't develop those alleyways properly, then they just kind of get forgotten and built over, and then we're in trouble later, so.
All right. Well, thank, thank you councillor Swiger for making a motion on behalf of council. "That council directs administration to bring back a report on the feasibility of opening or closing alleyways in the municipal hamlets to future meeting of council as directed." Any discussion on that? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's all good, and it's, I think it's important to, you know, to make plans, but I am not willing to move other priority projects to go to, to alleyways to spend millions in alleyways where that kind of money could be allocated elsewhere, like maybe a fire hall in Cherry Grove.
Right, thank you. Councillor Scarsen?
Yeah, I'm a little, I guess I'm just looking for a little clarity, like, what is it exactly you're after here? It's, I mean, there's alleys in Ardmore and Glendon right now, right? So, I'm not, I guess I'm just confusing, or, sorry, Fort Ken, I meant to say.
Okay. So, Mr. Reeve, yeah, there's alleys, but there's not, that's the problem. They're, they're on, they're on maps, it shows an alleyway, but they're never developed. And so you've got neighborhoods with, says an alleyway behind their house, but there is no access to those alleyways. Like the Fort Ken ones, for example, there's an alley that was west of those properties that we're talking about this morning, but it's not developed, and dead ends, and I'm thinking, well, why is it dead end? Like, just kind of, let's, let's finish those alleyways.
So you're saying, then, that you want the staff to look at how much it's going to cost to build alleyways in, in these spots?
Well, if that's what administration decides that they want to do, then you, you've got alleyways that are there, people are using them, but they're just grass, like, there's no approaches, there's no, you know, to get to your backyard, you gotta drive down over, you know, just you're driving across a lawn, basically.
So is it, like, is this something that we could say is going to happen in the next five years? I mean, I, to me, it just seems a little bit pointless. I, I would never endorse building alleyways in Ardmore and Fort Ken right now, to be honest. So why, why would we, why would we ask staff to say how much is it going to cost to do this?
Yeah, we've got folks right now that have been asking for alleyways behind their homes, and there's an approach. We, the MD spent money probably about four or five years ago with, with Atco pulling out some power poles to finish an alleyway behind these residents that wanted, that needed an alleyway access, and that kind of thing just never finished. We never, we just never kind of finished it. We moved, I think, one power pole and left the rest there, and, I mean, it doesn't, this doesn't even have to be an expense, it just means, let's, do we want to protect these alleyways, or do we want to sell them off like we almost did a year ago? And I don't think you want to be doing that.
Yeah, Al, what kind of report are we talking here? Just like, how much is this going to tax our staff to do a report on this?
Well, thank you, Mr. Reeve, through the chair to council. So my understanding, and the way I, I thought we were, the direction we were heading in prior to the lunch break, was talking specifically about opening or the closing of current alleyways.
Yes.
It wasn't my understanding, and unless, and unless council wants to go a bit further, I certainly wasn't going to be, we weren't going to be studying the recreation or creating new alleyways. We were going to look at maps and say, listen, we agree this, this laneway goes nowhere and does nothing, so maybe it should just be closed, or maybe there's another use for it. But I'm certainly, how much is it going to, I mean, there's certainly going to be work involved, but I, it's not going to be significant. We'll pull out the maps, we'll, we'll go take a drive, and I, it won't be a huge amount of work, but i- if that's the scope, if the scope is to do something different, to actually start thinking about creating new alleys, or upgrading these alleys to an actual laneway like you would have in the town of Bonneville, that's a different, that's a different story. Right now, I was just, it was my understanding that we were just looking at whether or not we should keep a laneway open, or we should close it and, and allow the adjacent neighbors opportunity to purchase that, to, to expand the size of their property. That's what, that's, that was my understanding.
The motion is kind of a report on the feasibility of opening or closing, so it's not, it's, I thought we were just going to have a little, a little get together one day and, and talk about it more than anything, but.
Can I just add to that? Mrs. O, you know, we did this years ago in Crane Lake, there was an, there was an access, an alleyway access that we sold, and, and then we went back there thirty years later and said, well, we need this access to run a drainage system. Well, we don't have it anymore because we sold it. So, I mean, if, as a minimum, if we can look at this and say, yeah, we need these for future, let's not sell them.
Well, that's quite simple, then, you just make a motion to not sell any of these things and have them, right?
Mr. Reeve, if I could add that maybe, maybe better than a report, maybe, if that's the direction, maybe we ought to be coming back with a policy on, on laneways and the closure of laneways, and that, that policy could be very clear that, you know, that except in exceptional circumstances, it's policy of the MD to not close laneways in our municipal hamlets. Maybe this is better suited to come back to councils as a policy than as just as a report.
Well, that's what I thought, we were going to have a discussion on something like that, and then to put it into policy would be ideal, probably, right?
Yeah, and I can, Mr. Reeve, I, I can understand everyone's kind of concerned here because you haven't seen, like, you don't live in Ardmore or Fort Ken, so you really don't know what, or Crane Lake, or, I mean, maybe Cherry Grove has alleyways that are actually defined, but, you know, Bob's going to build a shed across one because no one realizes it's there. I was saying, lay them out so we know they're there, and let's maintain them, or let's, let's not lose them and sell them off.
Okay.
I, I think that's.
You like this?
I think the motion's okay, as long as everyone's kind of happy that we're not spending a ton of money, we're just having somebody look at them and say, yeah, we, we need these, let's keep them, let's not sell them.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you don't think, Mr. Councillor Swiger, we just have a, a policy instead? No? You're okay with this?
The policy's fine if, if that's what.
Yes, councillor Scarsen?
Like, so do, like, do we have MRs right now? Like, we, you have a map that shows what we own, right, the alleys and all that stuff? So, again, I'm just a little confused on what exactly you're asking for, because, yeah, everything that gets sold comes back here, right? I mean, we just sold a piece of, out by, for that house there, right, that corner lot, so, I mean, everything that gets sold comes back here anyways.
Okay, so here's, here's an example, and I've already brought this up. Main Street, Ardmore, there's an alleyway on the, on the east side of Main Street that only runs partway through the alley, because this council forty years ago, or whatever, chose not to develop the alley right through, even though it's a roadway that we don't, they didn't do that, so a guy built a garage across it, that's the end of that. So, you know, how do we stop that sort of thing? If you never think about them, it's, you know, you just lose them.
Well, I don't know, that's true, I mean, it comes back to our planning department, right? I mean, they would, the guy comes in for a permit, unless he just threw it down there, I guess, right? But comes for a permit and says, okay, you got to build it here, or whatever, so, right, you're not going to build on an MR unless you're doing it illegally, right?
You tell me, I don't know.
Well, I would guess.
Yeah. Al?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So we have an ER MR bylaw, and I know that there is a new ER MR bylaw planned to come before the end of the year. There is lots of activity on our ERs and MRs that is technically illegal, some of the, that the MD just looked the other way for many years, and for us to start enforcing hardcore, we actually have buildings and houses who are on our ERs and our MRs. In particular, I've seen some where we'd actually be asking to have, you know, a quarter of the house removed because it's built on the ER and the MR. Some of these alleyways, in particular the one that was discussed this morning, is actually a registered road. So we've got laneways, we've got public utility, or public utility quarters, PUCs or PULs, we have ER and MR, and I think the discussion really probably, as, as I'm listening to council, probably comes down to more, in terms of enforcement. It would never be my advice to sell any of our laneways or close our laneways. We don't know what the future holds and what we potentially might need to use that for, could be drainage, could be something, we just don't know. But we are having, and there has been enforcement challenges over the last probably fifteen or twenty years in our ERs and MRs. There is going to be a new bylaw coming, there will be some public engagement done later this summer regarding the ER and MR bylaw. That is going to be contentious on its own. We have lots of, of people who have expanded onto our ERs and our, and our MRs. So this sounds to me, this is more of a, if we're worried about people building on our, on our lanes, et cetera, et cetera, this sounds to me to be more of enforcement-related than it does, than it does actually, what are we going to do with them? But I'm, again, it's council's motion, council, we'll, we'll certainly come back with, with a report on whether we should or should not open or close any of the alleyways in municipal hamlets. I basically gave you the Coles Notes version of what I think that report is going to say.
Yeah, but I can, I can do the report right now, I don't think we should be closing any of them, so, you know, I don't think anybody here would want to close them. But anyway, any other discussion on this? Okay, I'm, call for the vote, then? It's defeated.
That's the old one.
Okay, thank, thank you, we're going on to eight point one? Okay, let's start, start selling alleys. SAs subdivision application, eight point one? Good afternoon.
Subdivision application.
Just your mic. It's okay.
You can't hear me?
No, that was Ben, that's all Ben, yeah.
Everybody else can hear me, okay, we're good. Subdivision application two zero two two dash S dash zero zero five. Administration has received and is presenting application number two zero two two dash S dash zero zero five for council consideration, where in, in the applicant is proposing to subdivide an eighty acre split from a previously unsubdivided agricultural quarter section as shown on the map attachment as A. Notification of proposed subdivision was mailed out to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of May eighteenth, 2022, to submit concerns to be considered at the June eighth, 2022 council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. Administration recommended action is the application meets all considerations of the Municipal Government Act subdivision and development regulations, and the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw. Therefore, we recommend that council approve subdivision application number two zero two two dash S dash zero zero five to subdivide an eighty acre split from a previously unsubdivided agricultural quarter section in northwest thirty one fifty nine four west of the fourth meridian for Diane Vichon as per the conditions presented. Legal and physical access to proposed parcels and remnant. If subdivision is to be registered by plan and survey, a seventeen foot strip on the north side is to be dedicated by separate road plan, or if the subdivision is registered by descriptive plan, owner enter into a land acquisition agreement for a seventeen foot strip along the north side. I have noted on here as condition number three that the owner shall dedicate by caveat, Alberta Transportation has no longer requirements for this, so we'll be removing condition number three, however, condition number four, taxes to be paid in full, will remain.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Crick?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with this, and I'd make the motion that we approve this subdivision.
Okay, thank you councillor Crick for making your motion on behalf of council. That council approved subdivision application number twenty twenty two S zero zero five to subdivide an eighty acre split from a previous unsubdivided agricultural quarter section in northwest thirty one fifty nine four west of the fourth meridian for Diane Vichon as per the conditions presented. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you, on to eight point two?
Administration has received and is presenting application number twenty twenty two dash S dash zero zero six for council consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing to subdivide one fifteen acre parcel from a previously fragmented agricultural quarter section as shown on the map attachment as appendix A. Notification of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of May eighteenth, 2022, to submit concerns to be considered at the June eighth, 2022 council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application, and administration has recommended action that the application meets all conditions of the Municipal Government Act subdivision and development regulations, and the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, Municipal Development Plan, and the lower, lower, sorry, the Land Use Bylaw. And therefore, we recommend that council approve subdivision application number two zero two two dash S dash zero zero six to subdivide one fifteen acre parcel from a previously fragmented agricultural quarter section in northeast six sixty one eight west of the fourth meridian for Dane Gulbra and Tammy Gunther as per their conditions presented. Number one, legal physical access to proposed parcels and remnant. Two, cash and loom. Number three, the owner shall dedicate by caveat a thirty meter service road along the entire frontage of the north side of proposed and remnant parcels as per Alberta Transportation requirements. A seventeen foot strip shall be dedicated on the west side of the remnant to be dedicated by a separate road plan, a real property report, sewer compliance with the Alberta Safety Codes and Alberta Public Health Act, and taxes to be paid in full.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Kevia?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, I see no issues with this. I make the motion to approve. I have a question. Because it's a fragmented quarter, is this the maximum they can subdivide?
This is, yes, this is the maximum prorated amount that would be allowable within the remnant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Kevia for making a motion on behalf of council that council approved subdivision application number twenty twenty two S zero zero six to subdivide one fifteen acre parcel from a previous fragmented agriculture core section in northwest of eleven sixty eight sixty eight west of the fourth for Diane Gulbra and Tammy Goocher, sorry, Goocher, as per the conditions presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Nope, sorry, call for the vote. Don't throw, sorry. So he has to do that. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Nine point two? Sorry, I missed one there. Yep, nine point two point one, yeah, shelter belt?
Okay, good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Today I have policy number five A dot zero zero seven Shelter Belt Tree Planting Policy Amendment. So administration is proposing amendments to the policy, Shelter Belt Tree Planting, to update the current soil conservation guidelines, minimum distancing to planting trees in roadways, and updating the variety of trees available, and how they are sold online. The committee of the whole reviewed the proposed amendments to the policy on May eighteenth, 2022, and are recommending that council adopt the amended policy. Since then, the committees, since the committee's review on the May eighteenth, administration has added section two to address the setbacks for trees and corner lots, and we also have an attachment A, it's a corner visibility triangle diagram. So it doesn't change much of the policy, it just gives some setbacks on intersections, on where to plant the trees, so it gives a little bit more clarity. So administration made that friendly amendment from the last time you seen it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve this policy as presented.
Okay, thank you councillor Crick makes a motion on behalf of council that council adopts policy five A double oh seven Shelter Belt Tree Planting Policy as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote. Carrie, thank you, on to nine two point two?
Okay, so next is policy number five A dot zero one zero Agricultural Use on Road Allowances Policy. Administration is proposing amendments to the policy on agricultural use in road allowance to clarify the use of back slope and procedures on obtaining permission for the usage and timing of mowing in the road allowance for forages to be removed. The committee of the whole reviewed the proposed amendments to this policy on May eighteenth, 2022, and are recommending that council adopt the amended policy as presented.
Thank you, just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass option one.
Okay, thank you councillor Slipchuck for making the motion on behalf of council that council adopts policy five A zero ten Agricultural Use of Road Allowance Policy as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. I thought you said backs, back soap. What kind of, what kind of thing are we doing here? Carrie?
Okay, so next was policy number five B zero zero two, the Hamlet Community Roadside Cleanup Policy. Administration is proposing amendments to this policy on the Hamlet Community Roadside Cleanup Policy to make it easier for groups to participate, assignment of roads, and to the groups to address safety protocols. The committee of the whole reviewed the proposed amendments to this policy on May eighteenth, 2022, and are recommending that council adopt the amended policy as presented.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, councillor Swiger?
Yeah, I'll just make the motion to accept that policy, option one.
Thank you councillor Swiger for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts policy five B double oh two, Hamlet Community Roadside Cleanup Policy as amended. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote, then.
Okay, so next I have the 2022 Brushing Plan Update. So on May eighteenth, 2022, at the committee of the whole meeting, the committee directed administration to bring back to a regular meeting a council recommendations to use the 2022 but brushing budget to complete the back sloping and rock removal from the 2021 brushing program that had issues that were caused with brushing road allowances that had too many rocks and additional back sloping issues. Administration is proposing that Infrastructure Services use the 2022 Brushing Program funds for the back sloping and rock removal of the 2021 completed brushing areas. So attached, we do have the two brushing areas that are highlighted. In the discussion, again, the Infrastructure Services will take over the 2022 Brushing Program with the focus to remove the rocks and to fix the back slopings that were completed in the fall of 2021. There will be a request of proposal for contracted services to do the back sloping and rock removal.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion. Yeah, councillor Crick?
I'll make the motion that we approve this.
Okay, thank you councillor Crick for making a motion, motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to use the 2022 Brushing Program funds for the back sloping and rock removal in the completed 2021 brushing areas, and use any remaining funds for additional brushing as determined by admin. Any discussion? Yes, councillor Swiger?
Yeah, so I guess the discussion is how do we go forward, because you want to, you want to remove rocks before you do brushing, generally?
I think what, what's going to happen is in the fall during budget times, we're going to review the current policy that we, we have, and have a discussion with council on how we want to move forward. We'll see how the summer goes with, with completing this project, and then we'll have a little bit more insight on how to move forward. But yeah, there will be some changes on, on picking the roads and who will be doing them, so.
Yeah, councillor Crick?
Yeah, so Range Road, looking at appendix B, there's, well, you can see Range Road four fifty one is in yellow to get, I guess, the rocks cleaned up around that one, but over to Range Road four fifty two just south of Highway twenty eight there, and there's kind of the buffalo farms in there.
Yep.
I had a concern brought to me that they, that they did brushing further south on the road, but then they kind of stopped and didn't go around those curves where the, kind of where the buffalo farms were, so I don't know if that's on the list to get done when, if there's extra money after we do the rock picking, or what, but.
Yeah, it definitely can be looked at. When we did our proposals, there was probably some little bit of resistance on why we couldn't get that done, but we'll definitely look at that. If you want to, just send me an email, and then we'll put it on the, on the list, so.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Any other, councillor Slipchuck?
Okay, so we're going to use the 2021 brushing money budget for rock, back slope and rock removal. If there's any calls during the summer or something like where there's intersections or that request and comes clearing, are we going to have money left? So, some money in there so we can still take care of those needs during the summer?
Yeah, through the, to councillor Slipchuck. Right now, we do have money within Infrastructure Services to do the, the small intersection jobs, and that we do have brushing crew that are available to do those small jobs currently.
Okay. Yeah, Matt, we don't have a big mulcher anymore, do we?
No, I believe that, through the rev, I believe that was sold.
Okay, well, that big, big one, that wasn't much of a mulch? That was just a big dinosaur?
Yes.
It's so heavy, but are, I guess it's not a question for you, but I don't know for for the next, next budget?
I believe the crews do have a skid steer mulcher.
Yeah, that's not much of a mulcher, though. That's just for little baby stuff.
Yeah.
Something we got to look at, I think we should look into something like that. Okay, I guess that's for Mr. Bespolko, thank you. Okay, I guess I'll, any other discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Nine point three point one?
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve and council.
Yeah. Good afternoon. Today I have for you RFD for Sunset Beach Road and Drainage Improvements. At the regular meeting of council on August twenty fifth, 2021, administration responded to a council request by presenting a conceptual alternative plan for the Sunset Beach Road and Drainage Improvements, appendix A. This plan was an in-house solution that had been scaled down from what was originally proposed at earlier council sessions. Administration was tasked with proceeding with additional engineering work, as was required for this design. Since the August twenty fifth, 2021 council meeting, administration has completed the following measures to prepare for the proposed 2022 construction of this project. The open ditch construction method was reevaluated, and administration has determined that due to the utility conflicts and the complexity of the slope stabilization, other options needed to be explored. An alternative option of boring a twenty-four inch HDP pipe along the same alignment of the open ditch version has been explored, and some budgetary quotes have been received. This methodology would eliminate the need for slope stabilization by means of a shearkey and guardrail requirements. It would also minimize the vegetation removal and erosion control required, and would potentially eliminate all but one of the utility conflicts. In this design, only one power pole would need to be relocated by Atco. Administration has concluded that the north culvert does not require a liner, as the structural integrity is still intact. It will, however, need to have the last fifteen meters cleared from obstructions that were created from the rebar screen installed in the outlet, coupled with the high lake levels experienced approximately four years ago. Some minor grading will be required on the road and ditch in two locations. It's appendix B. Requirements for the Water Act approval and Code of Practice notifications have been confirmed with, with AEP. Administration would anticipate the drainage portion of the work to commence in July, with the rip and relay portion to follow soon after. This is part of our 2022 capital budget. Our recommendation is that council accepts the Sunset Beach Road and Drainage Improvements update as information. accepts the Sunset Beach Road and Drainage Improvements update as information.
Yeah, councillor Swiger?
Just curious, are we actually going to do any work this year or just engineering?
No, we plan to start in July.
Is that just, that, that motion just says engineering? So I was just curious, if I read it wrong.
Well, the work was approved in the capital budget this year, right?
Yeah, I know, it just wasn't very clear in the, in the direction to council here what we're actually doing.
I think that motion from last year was the first one, and then from there it went to the, to the budget, right?
Yeah.
Through the chair, yes, it's, it's an approved project. This was, I'm, I'm wondering, I think councillor Swiger, you're looking at appendix A, which was last year's motion. This year's motion is that council accepts the Sunset Beach Road Drainage Program, Drainage Improvements as information. We plan on doing the drainage work in July and the road, once the drainage work is completed. So it'll be done, it'll be done this year.
So it's not, yeah, it's not just info, we're actually going to go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
Good.
Looking from, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for, for information.
Okay, thank you councillor Scarson for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the Sunset Beach Road and Drainage Improvement Updates as information. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And I would add, Mr. Reed, that this is a significant savings from what was originally budgeted. At one point, we were three to five million dollars in this road, and I, I don't have the number in front of me, but we are going to come in under what we had originally, or what we had said we would be budgeted. So the, the men and women in transportation have done a great job putting this plan together, and we certainly hope that the residents along Sunset Beach Road see an improvement in terms of their drainage in the road.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Carrie?
Thank you.
Nine two, nine three point two, Mini X, yeah, Mr. Vispolko?
Good afternoon, Mr. Reed, members of council. I'm here for the, an RFD for the purchase of a Dusan DX six two R dash E mini excavator. In the twenty twenty-two capital budget equipment replacement program, ninety thousand dollar funding was allocated for the purchase of a mini excavator in twenty twenty-two. A recent, or sorry, a request for proposal to supply this equipment closed on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. A summary of the three lowest submissions received, not including GST, is follows: Japa Equipment Rentals for ninety-six thousand five hundred, Brown's Equipment Sales for eighty-six thousand five hundred, Extreme Equipment for ninety-seven thousand dollars. As the unit from Brown's Industrial was the only submission with, within the approved budget, a transportation foreman attended the sales location and tested the unit. After testing, he was satisfied that it would meet the MD's needs. Administration recommends a contract award to the lowest bidder meeting their minimum requirements. Brown's Industrial Sales at a, at a price of eighty-eight thousand dollars plus GST, which includes the purchase of the optional cleanup bucket for fifteen hundred dollars and is within the twenty twenty-two allocated budget for purchase. The costs and sources of funding are in the twenty twenty-two capital budget equipment replacement program and its administration's recommendation that council approves the purchase of the Dusan DX six two R dash E mini excavator plus the optional cleanup bucket from Brown's Industrial Sales in the amount of eighty-eight thousand dollars to be funded from the twenty twenty-two capital budget.
Thank you. Councillor Swiger?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Sir Reed to approve.
Okay, thank you councillor Swiger. Make some motion on behalf of council that council approves the purchase of a Dusan DX sixty-two R three mini excavator plus option cleanup bucket from Brown's Industrial Sales in the amount of eighty-eight thousand to be funded from the twenty twenty-two capital budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, on to nine, three, three, for heavy duty trailer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reed. This RFD is for the purchase of three heavy duty trailers. In the twenty twenty-two capital budget equipment, equipment replacement program, four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of a total value was allocated for the purchase of three new heavy duty trailers, a forty-ton tandem axle Jeep, sixty-ton tandem ax, or tandem, sorry, tridem trailer, and forty-ton scissor neck trailer. An RFP was posted to Alberta Purchasing Connection on May fourth, twenty twenty-two, and closed on May eighteenth with three bidders responding. A summary of the bids, GST not included, received is as follows. Jerry's Trailer Sales Limited, three hundred ninety thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Hayworth Trailer Sales, two hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred dollars. This one did not have a price for the scissor neck. JJ Trailer Manufacturer Sales, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Not compliant with the minimum requirements. The three bids were reviewed by, by the transportation foreman. Two of the bids were rejected for non-compliance with the minimum requirements. Although the price for one of the trailers exceeded the approved budget of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the total for all three trailers combined is less than the total approved budget amount for the three trailers. Administration recommends a contract award to the lowest bidder meeting the minimum requirements, Jerry's Trailer Sales Limited, for a total price of three hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus GST, which is within the total budget for the purchase of the three heavy duty trailers. The cost and source of funding is from the twenty twenty-two capital budget equipment replacement program and its administration's recommendation that council approves the purchase of three heavy duty trailers as presented from Jerry's Trailer Sales Limited in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to be funded from the twenty twenty-two capital budget.
Thank you. Deputy Reed Fidel?
I'll make the motion for the recommended action as number one, please.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reed Fidel, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the purchase of three heavy duty trailers as presented from Jerry's Trailer Sales Limited in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand seven hundred and fifty to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two capital budget. Any discussion on this gentleman? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, council. That'll do it for infrastructure services.
Nine, nine point four one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Policy number one point zero zero three, councillor, committee and board member meeting attendance policy. Administration is proposing amendments to this policy. Currently the, currently it requires council approval for attendance to any meeting as defined, with the exception of a few conferences and conventions that approve attendance directly within the policy. This requirement can impact councillor attendance to some events when there is not sufficient time to present the invitation to council before the response deadline or even possibly the event itself. Administration is prepared an amending draft proposing the following revisions: removing the reference to committee and board members from the, the titles since the policy does not actually address them within the document; removing the requirement for council approval to attend events unless there is a fee associated with the attendance; and adding authorization for the reef to approve attendance on council's behalf when approval is required but not possible to obtain prior to the event. The committee of the whole reviewed this amendment on May eighteenth and are recommending that council adopt the amended policy with the following additional amendments: defining regular meetings for added clarity; adding the annual provincial agricultural service board conference and annual Alberta Economic Development Leaders Summit and Conference as pre-approved conferences under section one; and adding verification that affiliated meetings includes conferences under section two. Attached is the draft amendment for council's review. Administration's recommendation is that council adopts policy number one point zero zero three councillor meeting attendance policy, formerly known as councillor, committee and board member meeting attendance policy as amended.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I make a motion for option one.
Okay. Thank you councillor Slipchuck for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts policy number one zero zero three councillor meeting attendance policy, formerly known as councillor, committee and board member meeting attendance policy as amended. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine four two.
Thank you, Mr. Reed and the members of council. Nine four two is regarding the Regional Sports Tourism Committee, the draft terms of reference. On May the eleventh of twenty twenty-two, council directed administration to arrange meetings with our three urban neighbors to discuss the possible formation of a regional sports tourism committee and furthermore create a draft terms of reference for the committee for council approval. Administration has prepared a draft terms of reference for the regional sports tourism committee and would like council's input and approval before meeting with our urban neighbors as this will establish the scope and expectations of the proposed committee. If approved by council, this terms of reference document will act as a starting point for the committee. Some specific details are deliberately left blank or, or open to allow input and collaboration by each partnering municipality on the formation of the committee. Attached for your view is appendix A, which is the draft policy or the draft terms of reference, and our administrative recommended action is that council approves the draft regional sports tourism committee terms of reference as presented.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a question, I guess. I'm wondering what the, the real benefit to the MD on this one is in having this committee. And I know we kind of discussed it already, but just if you can, if Al, if you can refresh my mind and, or it's just maybe a different to me, the way, like, I'm not really involved in sports a lot, so I don't understand, understand that, I guess, so much, but I'd like to try.
So through the reef to councillor Crick, it was my understanding that one of the reasons that we wanted to form this committee, and it's not going to be a committee of council, it's going to be a committee made up of community members, was to have a committee outside of municipal government process could go out and lobby for items like, you know, provincial playoffs, the briar, those, the high levels, you know, this, the conversation all started with the winter games and the summer games, that we'd have a committee that the work in putting together a summer games or a winter games or briar wouldn't fall on municipal staff, whether it be the MD, the town of Bonneville, or the city of Cold Lake, but there would be committee formed that actually would manage, lobby for, do the applications for, and manage the, the actual on-the-ground activities once, when and if those large events came to the region. That was the purpose of putting the committee together, so this committee could then go from there. This is a starting point for that committee, and then from there they can design the committee whichever way they wanted to go, and they would become that lobby group, that focal point, at the pointy end of the spear, so to speak, in terms of finding those large sporting events that would come to the region. I would, I would defer to councillor Scarson as a, have I, have I stated it correctly?
Yeah, it's fine. I, I would guess, though, that once a committee is formed, that they might look at this terms of reference and make some adjustments. There's just some things in here that I didn't really picture, I guess, but, I mean, it's probably a fine starting point, I guess, and it could spark some conversation more than anything. So, I mean, it's just kind of like what Serena said earlier today, where, you know, if you benefit one, it benefits all, to be honest, right? And we build facilities that we want to attract visitors to, as much as Bonneville and Cold Lake do as well, right? So, I mean, to be able to host events at Kinnisou or at walking trails at Muriel Lake or wherever, it's, you know, I just think we just, I guess my thought was having each municipality on the same page and working together instead of pulling apart and trying to do things separately, right? So I think it's a good starting point for sure.
And I would, and I would suggest that the terms of reference is only a starting point. The committee, five years from now, the committee's own terms of reference may look completely different, but this begins a conversation to get the committee going, and then from there, they can do whatever they want.
Deputy Reed Fidel?
Yeah, it's also a way to grab, you know, like, gather all the information that we do need for future events and be ready for it. As we've seen, that it took the city of Cold Lake almost two years to gather all the information needed, so this way, this committee can be prepared for anything, and then when the time comes to submit something, you know, we're not, like, we're not behind the game, we're, we're ahead of it, so it's important. Thank you.
Okay, just looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the motion that council approves our draft regional sports tourism committee terms of reference as presented.
Okay, thank you councillor Scarson for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the draft regional sports tourism committee terms of reference as prevent, as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
I just got a quick question first.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess now, so what would you consider next steps to be?
Through the reef to councillor Scarson, the rest of council. So next steps will be is we'll put this together with a letter, and we'll send it off to the CA of the town and the CEO of the city of Cold Lake and the CEO of the village of Glendon, and start having some conversations and try to get, maybe at an administrative level, get everybody together, get them, get their councils to weigh in and approve this, and then from there, I guess it would be, it would be probably starting to form the committee with members of the public.
Okay.
Yes, deputy Reed Fidel?
Yeah, so, so during this, during the discussions, are you guys going to come up with some sort of budget to work, to work with, with these guys? Because I know they're not going to be able to do it with, with no money.
Through the reef to councillor Fidel, or to the deputy Reed, I act completely, that's going to be one of the conversations is as we move into budget in the fall, this committee will need some seed money to get started. What that amount is, I'm not sure yet. You know, if it was ten thousand from each, of each of the three municipalities, that would give them seed money of thirty thousand dollars to start with. I'm not sure if that's enough. If, I'm not sure if that's too much. I, I haven't got that far, but I, I do agree, there's going to have to be seed money for the committee to get started, and then from there, that committee can form itself and, and decide how it wants to raise money, either through, you know, sponsorships, donations, et cetera, et cetera, but I think it will need some seed money from the municipalities.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Onto, we voted on that, correct? Nine point four three, no?
Thank you, Mr. Reed, members of council. This particular item is on Community Futures Lakeland, the Beautification Loan Program update. In September twenty twenty-one, Community Futures Lakeland launched the Beautification Loan Program to assist local businesses to improve their appearance, design and function of their property. The program provides up to ten thousand in funding per applicant with twenty percent being grant money and the other eighty percent an interest-free loan. Council approved financial support for this program on August the eleventh of twenty twenty-one for businesses operating within the MD. Community Futures Lakeland presented the council as a delegation on August the eleventh of twenty twenty-one, and council approved their request for support in the amount of ten thousand dollars in grant money as well as thirty-eight hundred, thirty-eight hundred and ten dollars to cover the anticipated accrual of interest charges for the loans. Community Futures Lakeland has now fully allocated the funds provided through the approval of five applications from businesses within the MD. You can see them in appendix B. Due to the success and continued interest in this program, they're requesting a renewal of support from the MD. You can see their request in appendix A to keep the program running for another year. The requested funding would remain the same at ten thousand dollars for grant money and thirty-eight hundred and ten dollars for anticipated interest charges from the loans for a total contribution of thirteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. You can see appendix A, B and C, they are attached for council's review, and if approved, the thirteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars would come from council's grants to individuals and non-government organizations. The recommended actions, the council approves the contribution in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred and ten towards the beautification loan program as requested by Community Futures Lakeland to be funded from the twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Crick?
Yeah, I just think it said that due to this interest and success of the program, that they want to continue it. Well, anytime there's interest-free loans or grants being given out, there's going to be interest in that, and at some point or others, we're going to have to, if we're running out of money, we can't, don't can't afford to oil roads or pave roads hardly around the MD anymore. We're going to have to, because everybody realizes it's not a huge amount of money, but we are going to have to seriously look at how much we're just doing in handouts.
just doing in handouts, and this is also going to businesses which, a private business, I would think, should be able to, if they can't, if you can't, if private business can't make it, then there's something wrong with the business, I guess. So, I don't, it's not a bad thing, but if we do it, then I think we need to make, we can maybe even say this is the last year that we're going to contribute to this.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
Yeah, I wouldn't consider this a handout. What they are doing is they are beautifying a equipment, it's a catalyst to getting businesses going, and also, it is increasing the value of the property, which is increasing the assessment value, which is giving money back to the MD, and if we can pave a road for $13,000, I think that's a heck of a deal. I don't know how many inches of road we can do for that, but I think this is a great program, and definitely, definitely works, I'd like to make the motion for option number one, to keep this going for another year.
Yeah, and I agree, you know, it's no mystery that small business drives the economy, and it's, if this is a small price to pay to help spur business, I think it's a no-brainer, for sure, 100%. When I first started this program, I thought, man, this is a good one, right?
Yeah, the city of Westlock has done a lot of programs, and their whole face of their community has changed because of it, just by this little, small action.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion moved by Deputy Reeve Fedeau on behalf of council, that council approves a contribution in the amount of $13,810 towards the beautification loan program as requested by Community Future Lakeland to be funded from the 2022 operating budget.
Any discussion, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. 944?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. 944 is invitation to, the RMA is hosting their 12th Annual RMA Charity Golf Tournament in partnership with Canoe Procurement Group on September 14, 2022, with the proceeds going to the Stallerie Children's Hospital Foundation. Council has been invited to participate in the 12th Annual RMA Charity Golf Tournament. The event will be Wednesday, September 14, 2022, at the Northern Bear Golf Course located southeast of Edmonton. Registration for this event is $120 per golfer, and includes a cart, breakfast buffet, steak dinner. Spots are available on first-come, first-served basis, and alternatively, there are sponsorship packages available to support the event. You can see Appendix A and B has both the invitation and sponsorship package. Costs would depend on council's level of participation in the event, but the funding would come from council's grants to individuals and non-government organizations' budget. The administrative recommended action is that council approves registering X number of golfers for the 12th Annual Rural Municipalities of Alberta Charity Golf Tournament to be held on September 14, 2022, in the amount of X number of dollars to be funded from the 2022 operating budget.
Yeah, Counselor Skarson?
So, won't we have a council meeting that day?
September 14th, I would have to ask Ms. Severin to let me know if there's a council meeting.
I'd have to confirm, but I do believe we would have a committee of the whole meeting that day, yes.
I'd go, but I got to work.
We all have to work.
We'd all have to work. Well, three of you can go, I guess. Just have to explain to your boss why you're missing work that day.
I think this is good to do, but could we get some office, general manager, maybe, would be willing to partake in this?
Through the reef to Counselor Sipchak, absolutely, I'm sure I can find a staff member who could find it in their heart to give up a day to go golfing at the Northern Bear. I think that's a possibility, that there may be someone who's prepared to sacrifice that day for that, yes, I probably can find one or two people.
Yes, Laura Reeve.
I'll make a motion that we take option one and assign four to six golfers to go, and to be picked by Al, or if a counselor wants to go.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that, that Counselor Falew is not included.
And what?
He's not a counselor, he's a Deputy Reeve, you got to get that straight.
Through the reef, I would suggest that if council wanted to pass a motion to send four golfers, and then we can, we can, you know, between now and September, can figure out who from council would like to go, or even backfill with somebody from administration.
So, we can just leave those blank for now, or you want to put a number in there?
I would suggest if you're going to go option one, the council would request you to send four golfers, in the amount, I guess, $480.
$480, okay, let's, is that okay? Who made that motion? Counselor Sipchak? All right. Okay, thank you, Counselor Sipchak, on making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves registering four golfers for the 12th Annual Rural Municipalities of Alberta RMA Charity Golf Tournament to be held on September 14, 2022, in the amount of, it was 480? Yep, 480 to be funded from the 2022 operating budget. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie? Okay, 9.5?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. And members of council, this is regarding several other council invitations, so we kind of separated this into charge and no-charge events, so the first one of the no-charge events is Bonneville Friendship Center Indigenous Peoples' Day Celebration on June 21, 2022. Bonneville Friendship is extended invitation to Reeve and council to participate in Indigenous Peoples' Day on June 21, 2022, at the Harje's Law and Arena, which includes pipe ceremony, free barbecue, and grand entry. Number two is Bonneville District Historical Society Museum Canada Day Celebration Pancake Breakfast on July 1, 2022. Bonneville District Historical Society requests the Reeve and council to participate in the annual Canada Day Pancake Breakfast at the Bonneville Sophie's arriving at 7:30 a.m. Friday, July 1, 2022, and ready to start cooking breakfast at 8 a.m. I guess your cooking breakfast.
Mike's excellent. We send Mike to everything.
Bonneville District Historical Society Museum Canada Day Celebration Flag Raising and Opening Ceremony, again on July 1, 2022. The Bonneville District Historical Society has invited Reeve to the annual flag raising and opening ceremony at 1 p.m. on July 1, 2022. Participation will follow March, with flag raising with RCP, Royal Sea Cadets, and short messages from the President of Bonneville District Historical Society. In addition to charge events, we've already dealt with the RMA, oh, sorry, this is the Rural Municipalities of Alberta RMA District 5 Golf Tournament, July 15 to 2022. Viva County is hosting the annual RMA District 5 Golf Tournament this year on Friday, July 15, 2022, at the Cold Creek Golf Course. Cost for attending this event is $119, for first, which includes 18 rolls, cart, rain falls, lunch voucher, two beverage tickets, and a meal after.
Oh, sorry, and a meal after the round. The cost and source of funding, the RMA District 5 Golf Tournament to be funded from council's grants to individual and non-government organizations' budget. Our recommended action is that council approves attendance to the presented events as follows. Number one, the Bonneville Friendship Center Indigenous Peoples' Day, Bonneville and District Historical Society and Museum Canada Day Celebration Pancake Breakfast, the Bonneville District Historical Society and Museum Canada Day Celebration Flag Raising and Opening Ceremony, and that council approves registering X number of golfers for the annual RMA District 5 Golf Tournament to be held on July 15, and that would be at $120 apiece, so again, if it was four, that would be $480, and then you, council can see the options.
Comment, Mr. Reeve? I'm disappointed in Counselor Roberts, because I was chatting with him, and I told him to come to the Bonneville Golf Course and have the event here, and I guess he didn't do that.
Yeah, I guess I was just going to comment, Mr. Reeve, on the pancake breakfast. Council, MD Council, and Town of Bonneville Council have mostly attended the barbecue, or, sorry, the pancake breakfast, to help flip pancakes and serve that sort of thing, and then we've gone to the flag raising, and then we've got parades that same day, so I'll just make sure that our administration realizes about the parades, and we'll have floats in the Bonneville Parade, I assume, and Cold Lake Parade, and then, I think Glendon is later, but I guess I'm just making that comment to be prepared for parades.
Okay, and how about, someone want to make a motion, and then probably, do you guys want to do four and 480 again, or does anyone want to go to that? What's your recommendation?
Through the chair to council, I would suggest much the same as the previous one, if council wants to send a couple of counselors, or four counselors, and if there's only three spots, the council wants to attend, we can certainly find somebody to fill. I would also add, we don't really have a float for a parade, so, and there's, we have no budget money for a float, so we can certainly had, see what we can do to create something, but we don't, to my knowledge, have a float. I know we use the, yeah, we can do something on a trailer, but we don't have a float specific, so it would be a, we'd be doing this fairly unamenable budget.
Because, Mr. Reeve, you also threw candies and stuff as well during the parade.
We must have some money for candies. We'll find something, we'll figure it out.
There's always money for candy.
Thoughts? We'll have, we'll discuss that, for sure, we'll get that done. Okay, anyone want to make a motion? Need a motion, that's Counselor Kravjak, and it's a motion number one? And we're going to add four and 480 to that? Okay. That's already in, so, thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making the motion up there. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Skarson?
I don't understand, so there's two different tournaments? Is that right?
Yeah, one's a District 5, and one's probably a regional for all of Alberta.
But July, July 15 is a Friday?
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Reeve, if I may clarify, so this District 5 one is extended to RMA District 5 municipal members. The one in September is a charity golf tournament hosted by RMA, and they're partnering with, I believe, the Community Procurement Group.
Yep.
And, I mean, just, you know, you're not going to like this one there, Mr. CEO, but I'm just curious, like, so whenever you send employees to golf on a Wednesday or Friday, so, do you make them take a vacation day, or how does that work?
Through the chair to Counselor Skarson, rest of council, know that if we're sending them on behalf of the municipality, to represent the municipality, that's considered a workday.
Yeah, and then how do, so how is that picked? I mean, you pick two people to go golf at Northern Bear on a Wednesday, all expenses paid, I mean, it's not a great thing, I guess, there'll be some people upset, so I'm just curious how you handle that.
I guess, you know, we try to be fair, and we try to look through the organization, it always won't be GMs, but we do have, we do have some avid golfers in the group. I guess it would, I don't have an answer to the question exactly how we would do it, but we certainly do try to be fair, and not always send the same people. It is, of course, I have to be careful, because we are, we would be sending, you know, if we send somebody who is not normally associated with, working directly with council, it can be, you know, we have to be careful with just spending a day with counselors, and when we're not, when that's not what they normally do. But if, I, it would be, personally, it would be my hope that council fill the spots. These are political events that are designed for politicians and not designed for administrators. I would personally prefer to see council fill both of those tournaments with four counselors, as opposed to having the backfill with staff.
You're okay?
Well, again, I mean, whatever, it's up to council what they want to decide. I would be disappointed if four counselors went on a council day to go golf when we have meetings, right? So, that's just my thoughts, but.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Okay, well, obviously, we can't all four go on a council day, for sure. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote, then? Sorry? Yeah. Him say, "Good idea." Carrie?
I just want to make another note, too, please. So, it's on the record, is I don't really like that my name is not showing up on, so if we can look into that next time, if I go, yes, no, I want to make sure people know, all right? Thanks.
Just have to adjust the screen somehow?
Yeah.
Okay, Al?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and members of council, the next on the agenda is our correspondence and information, that council accepts the following correspondence as information, you can see the 12 pieces of correspondence we've received since the last council meeting. I would point out to you, in particular, was the letter from the Minister of Health that we received regarding physician access in northeast Alberta. He says a lot, but we still don't have doctors.
Any questions to Al from this? Yeah, Counselor Swiger?
Yeah, just, we all got that letter about the two doctors that are coming to the Town of Bonneville, MD of Bonneville, and there's lots of comments from some of the counselors about, yeah, let's try to do something, give them a package, and show them, you know, a good time at the MD, so they may come back here, so I don't know if we need to give the CAO direction to put together something for them, but it's well worth trying to do that, if you're going to try to keep people here.
I think that was presented, I think council was involved, or the reef was involved on that on a regular basis, and I think that still should, I'm not sure why it's not still being continued, but I don't know, the past, previous reef was always there, and they were, you know, hosting at a golf course or anything like that, and they were wine and dine to make this look like an attractive area, which it is, and, yeah, so, I don't know where, where did the miscommunication came in?
I believe I had heard about that already, yes.
Okay.
So, I think something's in the works, so when someone's coming in, we're all going to be, I don't remember where it was at, but we had discussed that, yeah.
Mr. Reeve, one more. 12 points, or, sorry, 10.5.
Yep.
I did respond to the Portage College invitation to Lieutenant Governor of Alberta Arts and Awards Events, so apparently, I'm the only one that wants to go to that one, maybe others would attend, but we need a council motion to allow council to attend that one in Lachlavish. I think it's a good news story for Lachlavish, that they're actually getting Lieutenant Governor to come and do a presentation there on arts and awards and that sort of thing. That's something that I hope maybe the MD would attract at one time in the future. Anyway, we'll need, I'll make a council motion to allow council to attend that, because there is a charge for that.
Do you want to make the, someone want to make the motion for this, and then you can make a motion for that after?
I'll make a motion for, to approve this?
I make a motion for Counselor Swiger to go to the Portage College invitation for Lieutenant Governor of Alberta Arts Awards Events.
Okay.
That's for all three days, or just the one day? Because, I mean, there's, it starts on the 8th.
It's just Saturday, Saturday afternoon, evening? Yep.
Does anybody else need to go, or want to go? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion moved by Counselor Kravjak on behalf of council, that council approves attendance to the Lieutenant Governor of Alberta Arts Awards Event in Lachlavish to be held from June 8 to the 11.
to be held from June 8th to the 11th, 2022. Is that written right, or should we change that for just a day?
Which day?
I'm only attending the Saturday.
What day?
The Saturday.
What date is the Saturday?
Is that June 11th?
Okay, let's just change that to the 11th.
June 11th, yeah.
That's for the wars and gala dinner, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for changing that. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Carrie.
Mr. Reeve, do you need a motion to receive the rest of that as information?
Yeah, we do.
I'll make that motion.
It should be coming up. Okay. Okay, thank you councillor Crick on making a motion on behalf of council, that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through, what, it's 13? One through 13? Any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Anything else from you, Al, right now? Okay, just anyone that has a report, go ahead.
Well, I'll tell you, I was at a library meeting yesterday, and, so, I guess, a little bit of good news, it's not official yet, but it's, when they do come ask for money again this year, it'll be the same or less, because they had a surplus last year, so, good for us there. That was the biggest takeaway, we had some personnel issues that we're dealing with, but overall, the library's back and doing very well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I attended B.R.F.A. meeting on May 26th. Oh, no, that was, sorry.
Was that far enough?
I got my dates wrong here. Somebody else, go ahead, I'll fix. Dana, you're up.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I attended FCM in Regina, so it was just nice to be back in person, and kind of networking with all the folks from all across Canada, so, that was kind of good to see. There wasn't, wasn't a large, sort of, political representation from a lot of people like Trudeau, we maybe thought he was there, but he actually spoke virtually, which is a bit disappointing, but maybe not. We had Jagmeet Singh, NDP leader, had some, kind of, good, good, new stories for folks, and he talked about federal, or federal affordable housing, and he said forty-eight percent of the housing must be affordable, and it was interesting, because he said, "What's affordable?" Well, in Ottawa, now, it can be as low as eleven hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom, whereas prior to that, it was probably twenty-five or three thousand a month for a place. Same in Vancouver, you can actually now get, apparently, a twelve hundred dollar rent in Vancouver for a one-bedroom, and this is through affordable housing initiatives. The other thing he mentioned was a dental program for kids twelve years and younger, so if you don't have dental, you know, dental program for yourself or insurance, I guess your twelve-year-old kids and less can get into some kind of dental program. But it was, it was, it was a good event, I'm kind of looking forward to a few more sessions, though, that cover off things that people would be interested in, there, I think it was a bit lacking maybe in content, but it's just a good start again.
Okay, thank you. I had an FCSs meeting, nothing much to report there, business as usual, B.R.F.A. meeting, there was a recommendation for a motion to both councils on how to replace apparatus. The recommendation was for bumpers to be replaced every fifteen years, and for tankers up to twenty years, so, and that passed, and that needs to come, I guess, to council for whatever approval. Had EMS negotiation, a virtual meeting, and we are requesting a face-to-face meeting, sometimes towards the end of June. Went to the FCA Fire Chiefs Conference, there was an excellent trade show, we had a guest speaker, Jody Carrington, talked about relationships, and the way you do things needs to change, and she talked about burnout, the reason for burnout, she said uncertainty, fear, and there's no end in sight, like with the COVID-19, for example. Also, she mentioned the motions were, will not kill you, but not talking about the might, so, excellent speaker, but used the F-word a little bit too much. On June the third, we had a chili cook-off, and I was one of the judges there. Thank goodness, there was only fifteen entries, not twenty, something like last year, and it was a great event to kickstart the rodeo. Okay, I was in good shape next day, thank you.
I'm sure Linda was thinking the same thing.
No, I had a quiet week while you guys were all gone, and the M.D. ran really well, and, so I'm gonna, I attended Greater North Foundation meeting for B.R.I.A. field-in, and their senior living lodge, and they're gonna be coming forward in the near future with a delegation to request funding, and they got some needs and requests and concerns, and that's all I have to report.
Okay. Yeah, May 26th, they had a B.R.F.A. meeting, the same as Mike said, he reported on that, FCSs meeting the same day, and we did give a grant from the FCSs for four thousand dollars to the Lakeview Lodge and Housing, that'll be used to purchase some barbecues and some outdoor patio for insurance and outdoor games for the seniors to enjoy in Bonneville here, so that was kind of nice to see that. And then, on May 27th, had Northern Lights Library System Conference in Outpoint, they, we had a tour of the facility, and they can, they have access to books even in other provinces, which is kind of cool, and there was a bunch of presentations all day, it was a pretty full day. I think one of the better ones was Dr. Margaret Law did a good workshop on governance versus operations. And May 28th, there was a Northern Lights Library System Board Meeting, that was our first in-person meeting since I've been here. They're cutting back from three delivery vans to two, they'll still get their, all the deliveries done in a timely fashion that way, but it'd just be a little cost savings, which is good. And then, May 29th, the 31st, was the Fire Chiefs Conference in Alberta, and that was in Red Deer. There was a bunch of speakers there, too, as well. One was really good, Kevin was his name, and it was from Enriched Academy, and he did a really good presentation, they focus on helping Canadians achieve financial health, and we talk about mental health a lot, but he had a bunch of statistics that outlined how financial health can negative, bad financial health negatively can affect people, and I think that would be a good one for our local first responders to get some training in that area, too. And then, as councillor Criviac mentioned, there was another speaker that had a good message on mental health, and very relevant, but had a lot of profanity throughout the entire speech, so much so that I thought I might be suffering from some mental health issues, and I would actually like to make a motion to direct our administration to send a letter to the Alberta Fire Chiefs Association, just addressing the issue of the, I guess, lack of professionalism, or however they want to write the letter, but there was a lot, way too much profanity in that speech, that's just completely uncalled for. I don't know if we need, can I do that right now, make a motion on that?
Why don't we finish with the reports, and then you can make a motion, sure.
And then, June 5th, June 2nd to 5th, we went to FCM, my first FCM, and, yeah, it was, it was good. There was, I did meet, meet some people there, there was a, actually, I met the same people at the Fire Chiefs Conference and at FCM, they had a booth set up, and I'll talk to Dan Heaney, our Fire Chief, about it, maybe we can, they had some ideas how we may be able to recoup some of our firefighting costs through insurance, so, that's it for me.
Awesome. Yeah, I'll start out with the, with FCM. Good conference, a little different, just, I guess, the buzz wasn't there, I mean, we kind of went from about eight hundred people, usually we have a couple thousand, so it wasn't as active. Their language was a little different, which is, it wasn't a good way, they talked about rural opportunities, infrastructure services, digital service, which I think we'll talk about until we have enough satellites in the air. They were saying that connectivity is key to vital growth, which we've been talking about for years, I mean, how do you, how do you get people to come out rural, while it's, it's being able to connect to the internet? Growth, they've seen a lot of growth in municipalities that were closer to the, to the bigger urbans, and that's where you see the growth in rural. Unfortunately, we still have our issues, and I think we could see growth in our smaller areas, but if we don't have proper connectivity, then it's be pretty hard to do that. They talked about asset management and planning was some of the key talking points, and also advocating for a different strategy for rural transit, how does that look? So, those are all, those are all good points. I also had a chance to meet on behalf of the M.D. with Minister of Transportation yesterday, and I was with Emily Hanson and Mayor Copeland from the city of Coal Lake. It was really good to have Mayor Copeland there, because he's been on this file for quite a few years, and I was, during the print, those days, they were talking about Highway 28, and from government to government, we've just been getting, it's just kicked down the road, you know, we talked about how much money this area brings, and that there's, it's kind of a little disappointing on my part to, for us to talk about our area, and talking to it, and their eyes were kind of glazed, they're, you know, they don't really know what we have and what we produce, so I'm not, I'm not sure why, you know, like why that is. I did make a, like, an invite to the minister to come up, so we can shore our area, and, but it's, yeah, it's different, I had to be, you know, quite frank to some of our discussions, and hopefully that will, that will happen, I'm not sure. So, one of the things, you know, our major intersections are always suffering, and, you know, hopefully, we can, we kind of made that happen, I just want to also, just got the wrong, the wrong thing here. Again, I was, I was pretty happy to have, you know, Mayor Craig Copeland there, because, again, I, those guys have a lot of patience, they'd be going in front of the minister year after year after year, and talking about the same, same highway, and so, some, some people call it, you know, the forgotten highway, some people, right now, have been calling it the highway of death, and that's just something that we, you know, as, as close community members, you know, we care for the people that are family members and constituents, and, you know, seeing, seeing these intersections keep, keep getting accidents, and for family members and people to get hurt on is just, it's not acceptable, so hopefully the province talks about it. What I took away from the meeting is pretty well that the province doesn't have any money. That's kind of what, you know, what they told us. They didn't have any money either, when Highway 63 was, was, was twin, so hopefully they can find some money, but we'll have to keep, keep beating the drum and trying to, trying to make them aware of our area, and how much wealth it brings to the province and our needs here, so that's about it, thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad we're all working together with as many municipalities and counties as possible that live and use this Highway 28, and I'd like to personally thank you, Deputy Reeve, for going. I was, I couldn't attend yesterday, but thank you for filling in, and I'd like to thank councillor Slipchik for the Greater North, I was at FCM, or I said into FCM, I don't remember, I couldn't, I couldn't attend, oh, the day before, I couldn't attend that, so thank you. And at FCM, one thing, I liked the Brant, we went out to see Brant, and they're looking for areas to venture and expand, so I think it'd be, I got a guy's card there from Brant, and I, wouldn't hurt, and Mr. Kushner from the town was pretty excited about that as well, so, wouldn't hurt to reach out to Brant, and we could bring maybe industrial, you know, Brant's a pretty big name, you brought him to our town, it would create a lot of jobs, and you never know, it doesn't hurt to ask, so, that's one thing I got out of the, out of the conference, and, yeah. Al, can a guy mention, we talked about Calgary and stuff, you had a good idea, do you want to mention that?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, so, we were talking, so the FCM schedule for the next three years is Toronto next year, Calgary the year after, and Ottawa the year after that. As we were sitting at FCM, it occurred to me that the study tours were not, not fulfilling in any real kind of way, a tour of Mosaic Stadium, et cetera, et cetera. We have an opportunity in two years, and plenty of time to plan it, that if the FCM is going to be in Calgary, particularly because the vast majority of FCM delegates come from eastern Canada, that I think it might be worthwhile for us to stay involved at the FCM level, and try to get some study tours from Calgary to go up to Fort Mac for one of the days, or a couple of the days during FCM. I believe the oil companies may, may have some interest in sponsoring some of this, you could get on a 737 at seven, or 7:30 in the morning out of Calgary, you could be in Fort Mac at nine o'clock, you could, 160 people on a 737 flight, four buses, forty people, go in four different directions and make the tour, and if you did that one or two days, and had, I believe those study tours would be sold out, I believe that industry would probably help foot some of that bill, and even if there was a charge to FCM delegates for that. I think we have an opportunity in two years to really sell what we're doing, particularly to those people from eastern Canada who believe that the tar sands are just exactly that, the tar sands, who don't actually have an understanding that they're cleaner today than they were a hundred years ago, when oil was seeping out of the ground, we've actually made a lot of that land actually inhabitable by both human and wildlife. So I, I think there's an opportunity, when it comes to Calgary, to really showcase and work with, I believe we should be talking to RMA about this, particularly with our FCM delegates and RMA, we have a real opportunity to showcase the oil and gas sector, potentially even tours here, we fly into the Bonneville Airport, and tours up to ID 349, Imperial, Sunovis, and those kind of things, maybe here would be focused on the carbon capture programs that are, that are ramping up. Anyway, it was an idea I had, that I think we ought to be, we ought to be spending some time with RMA and our RMA FCM delegate, to suggest that we have an opportunity in two years to showcase, I don't think if we, if we don't showcase oil and gas in the next two years, I think the window of opportunity will be rapidly closing.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, Deputy Reeve, if you have.
Yeah, I just forgot one thing, so, I'm just gonna give Al some direction here, so, basically, what the, what the minister wanted was, was a business model from us on, on our growth that we have here. I mentioned carbon capture, and it's kind of funny, they really, almost like they didn't know.
Oh, really?
So, so it's, it's not the roads now, but, you know, what, you know, what are the roads gonna be down, you know, down in the future? You know, we talked a lot about CFB and the expansion of it, so, if I can get, you know, CEO Al Hogan to approach, maybe CEO Kevin Nagoya, and come up with a plan to, to come up with something, another joint letter on behalf of the region, and a little bit more of a PowerPoint, a business model for tourism, CFB, carbon capture, agriculture, another thing I mentioned is, because, you know, we didn't, we don't have any rail now, that most of our stuff is done through, through big trucks.
On the road.
All on the road, so, again, that's, and those are the things they, they almost like didn't know, so which is, which is sad.
Yeah, it's a big deal, like, we don't have the rail here anymore, so everything goes on the highway, so every, every stinking load has to go down the highway, there's no more rail, so, good point. We're good, so Josh, you had maybe, you wanted to make a motion?
Yes.
Councillor Crick, sorry?
Yeah, did you draft something up there?
You may just send that worldwide, though.
Okay, thank you councillor Crick for making a, making a motion on behalf of council, that council directs administration to draft a letter from the Reeve to the Alberta Fire Chiefs Association Conference Committee regarding the use of profanity by the mental health professional during their presentation at the 2022 Alberta Fire Chiefs Association Conference.
I would just like.
Any discussion, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that the, the content of what she said was great, and very applicable to not just first responders or firefighters, but to tons of people, it was just the way, the way the presentation was done, and, so.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve.
Sorry, go ahead.
Interesting, Josh, and probably, I don't appreciate that either, but, you know, there's also been studies that people have, psychologists have done on swearing, and it's a stress relief thing, and so they actually do talk about that, too, but, no, I get it. But I'd just like to say, FCM, we've talked in the past about FCM and it being too kind of urban, not enough rural stuff, but now, just, everybody should know, Tanine Riddick is FCM president, and she's from Vegerville. Tanine Riddick is FCM president, and she's from Vegerville. So, we have that local connection.
Like, I guarantee you here, if we were all swearing here constantly during this meeting, there'd be some, there'd be-
Stress relief.
Some people be telling us something about it. At least I hope they would.
Anyway, Tanine, just remember Tanine Riddick in Vegerville, and we have that connection now, so for FCM.
Mr. Reeve, if I could add, in terms of Counselor Crick's concern, those that were on council prior to the election may remember her presentation to RMA over Zoom or over video conferencing at the spring of 2021 RMA convention that we held, that was done over, so she, she spoke there, and there was some pushback even then. Her presentation was rather lively, even, even at the, at the RMA presentation, so.
Okay.
And Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
I think she's supposed to be speaking at our FCSS conference in November as well, so, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, plus, again, last year she did a presentation for, for women's mental health as well, and it was, it was along the same line, so.
Okay. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Okay. Do you want to do it right, like? Okay. Carrie.
I'm gonna, we go into camera?
Thank you. All in favor? Oops, sorry. Call for the vote? Or do we need that?
Yeah, Barry, just so you know, like, I gotta, I gotta sign some papers at three.
Okay.
So, I can, it's right here, lawyer, something on there.
Okay. Okay. We should be. Go ahead.
So, thank you, Mr. Reeve, with the, with the-
We're good, Julie? We're good?
Yeah. The motion is regarding the fire issue.
Little mic there. Thank you.
Yes, I believe the first motion will be regarding the, the fire issue.
Okay, thank you. Give you guys a-
I'll make the recommend the motion as presented.
Okay. Yep.
So, that's got to be two, that's got to be one motion? Like, there's two different things there, right? Or what?
Oh, three.
Oh, three?
Yep.
Through the Reeve to council, there's actually three items there that could be done in one motion. The, the first one is to issue the order. The second one is that in the event that the order is not carried out, that BFRA has the authority to take whatever action they deem appropriate. And then the third part of that is that should BFRA have to go in and deal with it, that the, that we would be invoicing the landowner for the cost of the work. You could separate those into three separate motions if you want, but I think in this case, they all kind of go together. I think one motion would be, would be fine.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Well, and I, I mean, of course, I wasn't here for the end discussion, but I'll just be honest, if, you know, I don't agree with the middle one, but so I'll have to not vote for it. But I agreed certainly with the first one, and I'm just, I'm not prepared to tell BFRA to go do something that they haven't even done before. So, I mean, to me, I think there's better avenues, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
I'll just speak to that. The BFRA is not going to put any of their firefighters in any danger in any way, shape, or form. They're, they're very professional, and they take very, take safety very seriously, so I don't see the issue.
I don't, yeah, I know, no doubt that they do, right? I mean, but it says, gives them authority to extinguish the open fire, right? So, I mean, I don't know. It's just something I don't want to be a part of, that's all.
As they deem appropriate, they do.
Yeah. Yeah, we each vote our own way, so.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor for, Fideau, or sorry, Deputy Reeve Fideau, for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration tuition order to remedy conservation for the landowner of northwest of 561, zero fourth of the west of Fourth Meridian, requiring them to extinguish an open fire by June 30th, 2022 in accordance with the section 545 of the Municipal Government Act, MGA. And furthermore, the council approves administration seeking recourse through the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority, BFRA, to extinguish the open fire in a manner they deem appropriate in accordance with the issued order of remedy conservations. And the landowners fails to carry out the order by the deadline stipulated. And furthermore, that council directs administration to proceed with invoicing the landowner for reimbursement of costs for work performed in the event that the BFRA are required to extinguish the fire in accordance with the issue ordered. Any other discussion on this motion?
Yeah.
What happens if the BFRA deems it's not appropriate for them to put out the fire? Then what happens?
Yeah, good question.
Through the Reeve, to Counselor Kreviak and to the rest of council, both the Chief Heaney and the Deputy Chief have indicated that they are prepared to put out the fire. So, I'm not sure that that, I, that's a possibility, but so far, there's been no indication that BFRA would not be interested in putting out the fire.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll, oh, yes, go ahead, Counselor Scarsen.
Yeah, just a quick question. I guess I'm just, again, with that second one, I mean, does the BFRA need our permission to put out fires? Like, I don't understand that part either.
So, through, to council, I guess, the issue here is it's not just the putting out of the fire, it's the potential destruction of private property. So, the canola is inside a grain bin. If the canola was just out in the field, or it was in a pile, BFRA would probably just go in and put out the fire. But what we're talking about here is a relatively expensive 20,000 bin granary going onto private property to actually take down somebody's property to put out the fire. That's really becomes the issue here. We're entering private property, and we potentially would be, would be taking action to, to actually damage or destroy private property. That's, that's the issue. That's why the court order, it'd be no different than, let's say, if somebody built, somebody built a cabin without a permit, and we didn't like it, we didn't think it was safe, we would have to go to court to get a court order through our bylaw or through section 545, where we dealt with exactly the same way, to tear down the cabin. This is essentially the same thing. We're entering private property to potentially do damage to somebody's personal property.
So, so then, count, like council has the authority to say, go onto that land and destroy that bin and do all that?
Well, through the bylaw, we do, but this is one of the reasons that the, our, our legal suggested that we use 545, the Municipal Government Act, because before BFRA would get that, part of the order, and the order would be worded in such a way, they have till the end of June to do it, and if they don't, we would be applying to the court to get a court order to enter the property and deal with it. We're not just going to go out there and, and do it, but as part of the order, the order will indicate the steps, the appeal process that the landowner has, what steps we would take afterwards, and eventually before, before we actually enter the property, we would have a court order in our hand from a judge saying, you can go ahead and do it. That's, that's why, that's why we're, go through this process. So, it's just not us going onto somebody's land and doing it. We're actually, we actually have a court order which, which holds us harmless from potentially all liability for doing that.
Oh, here, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Carrie. Thank you. Next one?
Mr. Reeve, members of council, next one would be regarding the aeration, and I believe there's, there's a motion there.
Yeah, just looking for a motion. Okay, thank you, Counselor Kreviak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council denies the unbudgeted expenditure of $12,150 towards the purchase of equipment and installation of power for the Little Bear Lake Aeration Project, and furthermore denies funding in the amount of $9,080 for the annual operating costs. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor?
Again, forgive me for this, but I may have read it. Who, so who requested this again? Like, where are the, Alberta, so is that like a Alberta government agency, or? Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious.
Okay.
And Mr. Reeve, I'll just, just kind of make the point that we did actually fund the aeration work, you know, to, to a point. So, just to let folks know, we are in favor of protecting the fish in that Little Bear Lake along 892, 897, 897?
Tremors Highway.
Yeah, Tremors Highway.
So, did we buy this one in the first place?
Yes.
Yeah. And they need a new one?
Just to, um-
It's never been done. Hasn't been done.
Yeah, to refresh memories, because Counselors Carson had to step out, the previous council approved $35,000 towards these aeration pumps at Little Bear Lake. What ended up happening is the, they've come back saying it's actually going to cost $47,000, so they wanted additional $12,000 to cover the extra cost of the pumps, and they also asked us to pay the operating cost of those pumps of $9,000.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve.
I think, uh-
Yeah.
Have somebody done that? Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Uh, sorry, Mr. Hogan?
And the last one discussed was regarding the Shaw House, the administrative plan for the Shaw House, and I believe there's a motion for that as well.
Yeah, paragraph.
Yeah, I'll make-
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, you guys arguing? Thank you, Counselor subject, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves administrations plan for the Shaw House as presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I call for the-
I would, I got a question.
Go ahead.
I mean, this is kind of besides the point, I guess, but this is another one where, I guess I knew it was coming up, but, I mean, if we know about these things beforehand instead of the day of, I, I just, I feel like I don't, I didn't have enough time to mull it over yet.
Yeah, and then you had to leave, so, yeah.
Well, then I had to leave, but I mean, it's, I didn't realize that it was on today's agenda until you get here, right? So, I mean, that's, it's just another thing where I just don't feel that prepared yet to make this judgment. So, I mean, I'm just, just giving you a comment, that's all, so.
Yeah, no, fair comment.
Well, I would, again, I would just say, like, so what are the timelines? Is there anything you can do this year even yet? Or what is, like, we didn't really talk about the timelines on, or at least I didn't hear.
Uh, through the chair, to Counselor Scarsen, the rest of the council, I guess it's all going to depend firstly on exactly when we take possession of the building and what, what obvious maintenance has to happen the moment we move in, holes in the walls, et cetera, et cetera. In reality, the visitor information center is probably going to be run out of here into the fall, just because if we don't take possession of that until August 31st, September 1st, we're probably going to use most of the fall to probably get everything set up, whatever repairs need to be done. I, I can see the VIC going to regular business hours probably late fall, and then, of course, we'll be certainly ready for high season start long weekend in May by, by the time the spring comes. Our goal is to have the interpreter center up and running, and I'll let Bowen, Mr. Clausen, or Ms. Kimbough speak that, but our goal is to have the interpreter center up and running sometime this winter, so we're fully operational before, before high season hits again.
All right.
Yeah, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie.
Yeah, I'd add a motion, if that's all right. I would like to make a motion that administration does, presents to us what an app might look like, might cost, and what it would all include as well. You know, kind of highlighting, oh, there you go.
Take a look at it, Darcy. Was that sufficient?
Yeah, that's good. I mean, the only thing I would maybe say is, is it, is it worth looking at how it might interact with, like I said, the town of Bible is doing one. I see in the newspaper right now, and I don't know if Cold Lake's got one in their, in the, but it's just, maybe that's a regional sports tourism thing or whatever too. I don't know. But anyways, it's just some interactability, let's say, if that's even a word, with how that might look. So, it doesn't have to, you don't have to have a discussion, let's say, but at least could it be a two for one or whatever, right? So.
Mr. Reeve, can I just comment? We, when we first hired Economic Development Officer, that was, we had a whole series of, of meetings with, with the public, and that was brought up by a few folks, that they come new to the area, have no clue even driving around Moose Lake, how to access the lake, because there's not a lot. So, they were just saying if you had some kind of service, some kind of app, that as you're driving, it would say, you know, here you go, you can, you can access Murray Lake, Muriel Lake, whatever, from these locations. Here's our campground.
Yeah, and map, and then also like a trail map too, right? Not just walking trails, but the quad trails and the hiking trails and all that stuff, right? So, there's lots of stuff that could be on there, so.
Yeah. All right, thank you. We have a motion by Counselor Scarsen on behalf of council that council directs administration to investigate the options for developing a mobile application for the recreation services, and activates the municipal district of Bonneville that the municipal district of Bonneville provides and brings back to a future meeting of council as directed. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
I'd like to make one more motion if I could.
Yes, to fire me?
A motion to adjourn.
Did we have anything else? No? Okay, all in favor? Good.
Aye, aye.
Good job.